I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax.
Here.
Mr. Brubaker. Ms. Karstoffen.
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Here.
And Mr. Ellington.
Here. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hello and welcome to the November 15, 2017 Board Meeting. I'd like to introduce everybody up here. On my far right is Board Member Jim Bax. To my immediate right is Board Member Kevin Brubaker, Vice President, usually sits. He's not here today. As everybody knows, he's involved with the City of Elyria and there's a severe gas leak that they're working on right now. He did say everything's under control and expect to have school tomorrow, so he did want me to relay that to you. I am Greg Ellington.
I'm still taking money for that, you guys.
To my left, moving down, is Board Member Mike Gebhardt, Board Member Annie Kristoffen, Superintendent Dr. Tom Jama, and our Treasurer, Joy Klickinger. Today, starting off, we have a very special recognition. I'd like to ask our Director of Pupil Services, Denise Blatt, to come up here.
Hello and thanks for listening to my speech. I wanted to take some time out to recognize three of my very important members on my team tonight. Over the last year, I was granted central registration. Last year about this time, and I was new, and the girls were all new, so it was four new people entering a, I call it a very large spoke in the process of Elyria Schools. You know, we pull all the student registration, all of the email data, we provide the information to the building, so it's a very important spoke. And as we all learn together, I was so happy to have these ladies on my team because we underwent through a lot of new processes and changed a lot of processes, including the online registration. And so during this, this past summer registration period, it was the first year that Elyria City Schools didn't hire any subs to come in. I worked tirelessly with these ladies for probably a good three weeks before, maybe, putting in anywhere from 60 to 75 hours a week. We would come in about 7 o'clock and leave about 10:30 every night. Bill Stowall would kick us out, and he'd even make fun of my appearance as I was leaving the door. They were like, "Really? You're talking that way?" We got through it, and I just wanted, Lisa, Christina, and Missy can all come up. I'll introduce you. Here are the triple awards for you. For those who don't know, this is Lisa, Melissa's her real name, but we call her Lisa Malhenge, Christina Malaco, and Missy Catherine. So, Missy's our Coordinator of Student Information Systems, Power School, which is the backbone of all of our student information systems for the district. In February of last year, we started a process called InfoSnap. It was the online registration, which actually Power School bought shortly after that, and we rolled out this year, the first year of the online registration process, which we've learned a lot, good and bad.
And we made it through?
We made it through.
All right, great.
The enrollment that we've done this year, if you include the summer withdrawals, which we have a transient district, so we processed over 400 withdrawals from May until the first start of the school year, but ended up over 150 students starting new. So that was over, almost 600 kids, these girls registered from that period, if you take the withdrawal, and then the way that we still ended 150-plus at the start of the school year. So, a lot of time, a lot of energy, and I give you ladies credit because we all work together as a team, and what can we do without you? So just apple of the eye award for all of you. I appreciate your hard work. Thank you. Thank you.
Great, thanks ladies.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you for all your help.
Yeah.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Oh, you're good.
Watch the corner there.
Thanks for that.
Watch out, line him.
I still remember you did it, Chris.
I won't say that.
Thanks again, ladies. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, thank you Denise. I like that term that you used, that you were granted this new area, so.
Gifted.
Gifted, gifted, okay, great.
There's our gift to work with. I think people would do without.
Okay, great. Thank you for that presentation, and next on the agenda, I believe, we are going to talk about an international field trip today?
That is correct, Mr. President. We have two teachers here this evening. We have Jennifer Bechtel and Hannah McLaughlin, who are going to, one, answer any questions the Board may have. As you know, they have brought it to my attention that they would like to take an overseas trip. The Elyria Schools, we have not done this in many, many years. And I know there's a lot of discussion out there throughout the community, but also throughout the state and the nation right now about field trips, and I thought, what's a better way to do this than have them actually come to the meeting, share why they feel it is so beneficial?
Thank you.
And you can answer any questions that you folks may have with reference to the trip.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you guys can have a seat, watch the little strip there, and hopefully the mics are on there.
That one needs to be turned on. Just hold that red button.
Testing?
Take a second.
Is it red light on?
Testing?
Here we go.
I usually don't need this in my classroom because I'm loud enough, so. Well, thank you, everybody, for at least entertaining us right now. I'm Jennifer Bechtel, this is Hannah McLaughlin, and we have been trying to figure out how we can take kids overseas and give them an experience that they would never get in Elyria, in Ohio, pretty much anywhere in the United States, actually. The first thing I'd like to say is that we want for these children to have opportunities. And we have so many at Elyria High School and in the district, but at the same time, they don't get to go too many places. Just taking kids, myself, to the Natural History Museum just a month ago opened up their horizon so much that it was so great to see these faces. Me personally, I've been in the district for 10 years now. I'm the leader of our science club, and I've helped with Science Olympiad. I just would like to see a heck of a lot more that we do scientifically at least, and that led me to Hannah.
Hello, my name is Hannah McLaughlin. This is my fifth year at Elyria teaching Spanish. Every year is wonderful to see these kids come in. I primarily teach freshman students, Spanish I and Spanish II, and every year I have students coming up and saying, "Do we do a trip? Do we do a trip? Are we gonna go anywhere? Are there any places we can go?" And it's been unfortunate I had to let them know, you know, "I'm sorry, we just haven't had the opportunity to take you guys anywhere." So we've been trying to come up with a way that we would like to share with you to take students. Ms. Bechtel and I have been talking about Costa Rica as an opportunity for students to not only see Spanish outside of the classroom, but to really experience culture in a different way, while also getting experience in a real-life, different ecosystem than they've ever seen. Jennifer found this great quote, and it says, "We can teach from experience, but we cannot teach experience." And that's something that we really hope that we can give these kids the opportunity to experience something different.
So, if you want to take a look through the presentation, you're more than welcome to. We did have it on a computer, but we figured this would just be a little bit easier with all of the power issues going on today. First off, why students should travel. We've experienced so many unique things personally. We want to share that and show that with the students as well, and hopefully that will just kind of exponentially grow year to year. Particularly this company, Explorica. We are not hard set on this company, but we found that we truly like it because they tend to cater to an urban culture. So they offer financial assistance to low-income families, they're willing to do lots of different types of payment plans, and ultimately kind of get these students to go to these countries and have that experience. We are very concerned with safety. Both Hannah and I have been overseas before with students. We've experienced out-of-country personally before. I have been with Strongsville City Schools, and we took a group to London and Paris, and we traveled all through the French countryside, and it was wonderful. We had 31 kids, everyone was safe. There are always minor instances, such as pickpocketing, that you have to warn the students of, or just somebody got left in the bathroom. And you know, and if you put certain safety procedures in play, everybody comes out happy and safe for all, and that's exactly what happened with my particular group.
The last trip I was on, we had 16 students that went to France, Spain, and London, and we had a wonderful time. We were 10 days in all, and all of these students were from all across the board, of having a lot of money, to some families had to really scrimp and save to be able to send these kids out of the country, but every single student had a positive experience. As far as this company goes, we've looked at other companies, we've talked to other companies, this, of course, is not the company that we have to go with, but they have been around for the longest time, and they have yet to have any incidences. The trip that we are looking at is Costa Rica in June of 2019. There's a tentative tour itinerary listed here, everything from traveling to national parks to volcanoes, hot springs, doing, these kids would travel to a local school and see what education is like in Costa Rica. They would have a folklore night where they would hear tales and learn about the history of Costa Rica. But also with this, this company offers an online tour diary, so that emergency contacts, parents, guardians will have the day that we do things that evening. Pictures will be uploaded by the company with a journal of what we've accomplished that day.
All in all, we just want to create this very unique cross-curricular activity so that the students have access to this. When you put Spanish or foreign language in with science, it doesn't always come out to be something cohesive, and that's exactly what we would try to make this. And it is. I mean, not only could you go to a country and speak the language, but then you get to go to a biological reserve. You get to figure out how the ziplining works in trees, go to, what was the marine, there's a marine life thing that the students would be interested in going to. I mean, half of the kids always ask me, "How do you become a marine biologist?" And the first thing I say, "You can't live in Ohio." They can't go somewhere else. So just by showing them that, I think it would be wonderful. Do you guys have any questions for us?
How many kids are you talking?
I think we discussed 15 maximum.
With this company, it is a five-to-one ratio. It has the lowest students-teacher ratio, Chevron ratio. So with us right now, we're saying 10. Hopefully, we'd be able to get, if there's more interest, we could do 15. We were hoping to keep it smaller first year, just to make sure everything goes without a hitch, and that everybody enjoys it.
And how many Board members do you need to go with you?
Oh, my gosh, all of them are welcome. And this is, those are welcome on these trips as well.
Five, 10, 15, 20?
What do you guys have in place to ensure that all kids would be able to go, even if they don't have the financial means to go?
One of the things that we really hope to get Board approval for is for fundraising. That is something that we would love to do, and I know there are several trips that are not Board-approved, that can't do fundraising in the schools. So that's something, we have a whole list of ideas going as far as fundraising, everything from having spaghetti dinners, to selling chocolate bars, to kids are really inventive car washes. We've had people talk about making bracelets to sell and doing something similar to that as well, so.
And to add to that, I have a lot of kids in science club who are using the Imagineering Hub right now, and they, we had our first, or I should say, our third meeting yesterday, and they actually were trying to brainstorm ideas, not necessarily for this trip, because they don't know about it yet, but in general of, how can they use what they're learning in that Imagineering Hub to benefit themselves and the community, and possibly, hopefully, we'll have them build little houses later on this year that could kind of coincide with some of the biological eco-reserve things that we're gonna see down in Costa Rica, just kind of.
What would you estimate the cost per student? What's your estimate?
The cost for this particular trip is nine days, and it is $2,000, I think it's $2,094, which seems like a lot of money. It is a lot of money, that's a car. But they do offer monthly payments as well, which if we had the ability to start now, their payments would be like $112 a month until we went. They also offer different plans. I think there's a four-payment plan that they have as well, so there's different ways with that as well with this company.
Correct me if I'm, and the reason we're bringing it so early to the Board as well is, we all have a year and a half to do fundraising, because it's not till the summer of 2019.
And what if a child decides he wants to go a year, a year and a half in, doesn't have time to do all that fundraising? How would you handle that, then?
This company is fully insured and backed, where the students would be able to get refunded their money. I think it's either 30 or 60 days out, where they wouldn't get their full amount back, but it also depended on which plan we chose and what the percentage would be.
Is that what you were asking? So that would cover a child that may have worked on it and signed up and decided not to go, but what if one wanted to go later on, or wouldn't that be an option? Because you're going a year and a half out.
You mean like if someone dropped out like halfway through, and then we had an extra spot to fill?
No, if you had a child that wanted to join later.
If they wanted to join later. Or if they don't have the money. That would actually be something, A, with the lovely Board policy that we're hoping to reinstate and maybe potentially change up for 2017, but then, I guess, between the student and their parents, and how they would like to address that. But the fundraising money that maybe potentially would not be refunded to them, that would be something that hopefully we could all sit down, maybe at a next date, and figure out exactly what we would like to do with that.
Would these be mostly seniors, or wouldn't it matter?
Well, right now, if they're freshmen, it would be their junior year, and if they're sophomores, it would be their senior year.
Are you expecting the total amount to be captured through fundraisers, or do you expect for the parents to have to pay a portion?
I would hope it would be a little 50/50, but it also depends, too, on who decides to come. I mean, half of my students, who their parents can afford it and probably could pay everything right now, and half students that can't do that, but really want to work forward to that. So I think ultimately maybe a nice little contract stating about fundraising, how we want to delegate those particular monies, would be something hopefully we could talk about.
$2,000 seems like an awful lot of fundraising over a year and a half. You're gonna have a lot of car washes and spaghetti dinners for that.
If you're hungry.
Right. Okay. Other questions, comments?
Would we need a specific, would we need a specific Board policy?
It's already, we already have a Board policy, correct Howard?
Do you have a Board policy on field trips, but you don't want to have some that specifically covers international field trips?
Okay.
If the Board is interested in having a field trip overseas, and I think it would be a good idea to revisit the current policy that we have and add to it so that it addresses some of the issues that arise.
Well, I think before we do that, first of all, we'll ask for a legal recommendation, Howard, if your firm could supply the Board with a legal recommendation there, that would be greatly appreciated. And then, what I will do is, we will table this discussion for now, and we'll give the Board plenty of time to think about it. When you're in the business of safety and education, I think we'll always err on the side of safety before education, but it's a very, it's a very interesting opportunity and one that the Board will give considerable consideration.
This has been done in the past, right?
Absolutely.
From the high school?
Yeah, it has been done in, I would say, probably 12 years.
Yeah, 12 years.
They used to go to France, and they used to go to Spain.
Yes. Okay.
But it's been about 12-year highs. That's why I said I believe we have some stuff already in place. I'm not exactly sure how in-depth it is, though.
Okay, great. Thanks ladies for sharing that information with us.
Good job, ladies. Thank you.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have visitor comments. "The Elyria School Board encourages and appreciates citizens' interest in the Board of Education. Normally, the Board will meet twice during the month and make accommodations to allow public participation. A person wishing to address the Board for up to five minutes may place their name on a sign-in sheet five minutes prior to the start of the meeting indicating the topic which they wish to address, or make a written request to the Treasurer's office one week in advance of the meeting to speak up to 15 minutes." Madam Treasurer, do we have any visitors today?
No, we don't.
Okay. All right, great, thank you. Moving along on the agenda to Board Member Discussion Items. First off, the Board and the management team went to the OSBA conference the last couple days, and Board Members, if you want to share your comments. I think it was very informative, very helpful for me. I was a little disappointed that one of my sessions that I wanted to go to, we got there and we couldn't even get into. So two years in a row, that's happened. But overall, I thought it was a wonderful experience and very helpful. Jim, any?
Yeah, just a few comments. Hey, first of all, I want to thank Joy for putting all the arrangements together for us. It makes life considerably easier to do that. And also to Sedexo for its hospitality suite inviting us to join them. I hear it was very, very good. I didn't get to join them, but I heard that was really good. Basically, I attended, I think about four or five different sessions, really just things to get, things to, just hear different opinions on, one, for instance, was creating flexible spaces for blended learning, you know? So you go in there, you see what it is. Basically, what it was, what they were describing in there was something, I thought it was gonna be about design of a classroom or something, and it was to some degree, because we're building all new buildings, I kind of wanted to hear this, but it was more targeted toward what we're calling Pioneer Academy. And it was about bringing students that have challenging situations, I'll say, into a situation where they can graduate and be successful. That was an interesting presentation. Like Greg, I had one that I didn't get to get in because the thing was full and the people were standing out on the hallway, about 20-deep, and that was on family engagement. And I think a lot of districts, obviously, a lot of people there were interested in that topic, because we find so many times that the student can be successful, but you've gotta have a support system at home, and you've gotta have a support system at school to do this. And with the number of people that were in that room, I think, you know, we might think we're the only district that may have an issue with that. Obviously, that's wrong, because there were a lot of people in that session. And then, one on state budget update, and I will go through that, and interesting one on a bond issue that Upper Arlington just passed, and not that we have anything to do with that, but it was interesting to see, I wanted to see the techniques and the tools that they used for community outreach. And they had some interesting ideas and some interesting ways they did that, so I made a few notes of that, and.
Great.
That's it.
Super. Thanks for sharing.
I enjoyed the time, great.
Great, thanks for sharing. Mr. Gebhardt?
At the trade show, ABG was there, and they had a virtual reality portion, where you put the goggles on, and they had Northwood there. And that was pretty cool, just, you know, you're looking all over, looking at the different rooms. They even had Mr. B. in there, I think, at one time. And I kind of felt like Superman walking through the walls, and it was kind of cool. And then I went to another one, Supporting Children of the Rainbow, and they talked about the LGBTQI-2S kids and the problems they have, and that was very interesting.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gebhardt. Mr. Kristoffen?
Okay. One that I thought was very, very informative was discipling students with disabilities. I thought that was extremely informative, and they talked about the 10-day rule, and for me, they kind of expounded on that one, explaining how you have to document for 10 days prior to discipling children, and how you have to make sure that within that 10 days, that you're actually given the reasons, the issues, the attendance, and everything, you have to make sure that they have, their busing is still in place, and making sure that you're actually giving the child everything that they need to be successful, and making sure that the relationship between the parent, the child, and the administration is all on the same page, and also making sure that the child's behavior is not a part of their IEP, but it is, because you can't discipline them if it's a part of the IEP, that it has to be something different. So I thought this was very, very interesting. It was some of the stuff that I just didn't know, so I was really interested in that meeting.
Good.
It was great.
Great, thanks for sharing. Joy or Dr. Jama, would you like to?
I was gonna share a little bit during the discussion piece, but I had an opportunity to hear our Governor, Governor Case hit, speak, and he's.
Well, that you may want to say for later, then, huh? You gonna talk about that for a while?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Very, I did have an opportunity to listen to him, though, and he spoke on several topics, but the one that hit closest to home, and it's something that we're dealing with as a community, and we're dealing with as a state, and we've even accepted the challenges by creating a video and by working with our partners, whether it be at the first responders to the hospitals, but he spoke about how dire we are right now with the opiate addiction, and that the schools are gonna play a major role in solving this issue, because it's not an issue that can be, you can't rush your way out of the opiate addiction. It has to be education, education, education. And he talked about the importance of guidance counselors, and the importance of working with your community partners in combating this issue within our communities. And, you know, I'm very proud to say that we've started and have done a lot with this by educating each of our students in the elementary and middle schools, and even at the high school with reference to this. But this is an issue that we're gonna need to deal with head-on, and I don't see it going away. I see it actually increasing or getting worse, and again, I think the only way that it's gonna be stopped or curtailed is through education. And he said, everybody in the room, and it was very true, I believe he said, everybody in the room here today knows someone that has been affected by the opiate addiction. And he said, whether it's your family or a friend, but everybody in this room knows somebody, and it's true. And, you know, it's something very scary, so I enjoyed his discussion about that opiate addiction and what we can do to solve those issues.
Great, great, thanks. Joy?
Well, I went to most of the budget forecasting meetings in the general session, and I felt it was interesting. But what I wanted to do is thank all the Board members for going, because the interest that you showed, the things that you learned, can only help the whole district in the project.
Great, thanks for putting that on for us also, and taking care of all that.
Joy was talking about the, on the state budget thing. Now, if I, if, the way I took the information that we were getting is that there was a fairly significant increase in overall state funding of schools, I'm gonna say in 2016, was that about right? Now, that, it looks like, yeah, it, I mean, to the tune of over $10 billion right in there. It looked like for the current year, as well as the next two years, it's going to be about flat, up slightly, but about flat. Does anyone know, or take a guess, in terms of how much of the state, of the $10 billion that the state's gonna spend on education this year, how much of that came from the lottery?
10%.
1%?
3%.
2%.
1.1 to 1.2 billion dollars with a B. I was amazed at that number. I thought, that is, that's like 10%. And so I thought that was an interesting, that's just an interesting little piece. And the other thing was that while the budget is about the same, the formula, the changes in the calculation. in the calculations are basically, look like they're going to be in the favor of districts like ours. Is that, would you agree with that?
It just fluctuates, so even though you think that state funding is the same, it might be across the whole entire state, but there's always winners and losers.
It appears that, it appears the rural districts are going to get less in the next two years.
Well, that's because of all the new CAUVs.
Right, it's all tied to taxes, property taxes, everything else, but I thought it was, it was an interesting discussion, but I was just caught by that one figure, I was amazed.
Great, great.
We're buying a lot of lottery tickets.
Great, thanks for sharing, Mr. Bax. Any other items then? Moving along on the agenda, to next on board member discussion items, the entire board is very excited for the rollout of Senate Bill 216, very supportive. Anytime that you have a mandate that rolls back around 100 different mandates and moves more authority and control from Columbus to our superintendents is a win-win all the way around. So we do have attached in your packets, a resolution to approve the support of Ohio Senate Bill 216, as detailed in enclosure E3, I'd ask for a motion.
So moved.
So moved. I have a motion by board member Gebhardt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Karstoffen, any discussion items? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Moving along to the minutes, the minutes have been posted for the, be November 1st, 2017 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as posted?
So moved.
I have a motion by board member Karstoffen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Bax. Any discussion? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Treasurer, action items?
Thank you, Mr. President. Number one, to accept the financial report for the month of October 2017, which includes all the bank reconciliations, the investment report, the cash balance report, and the appropriation and expense reports as detailed in enclosure G1. Number two is donations, to acknowledge, express appreciation, and accept the following donations and gifts as noted in your agenda, and the one that I want to point out, just because I happen to be there, was the donation from Big Lots. It was exciting to see the new store open and see a building getting used again and donating to our district, that was great.
They're good.
So they did two, correct?
They did two.
Yes.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer action items?
So moved.
I have a motion by board member Gebhardt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Bax. Discussion items? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Treasurer, any other reports today?
The only thing I'd like to say is I did put expense reimbursement things at each one of your places, so if you need any of that from OSBA, just fill it out or let me know.
Okay, great, thank you. Dr. Jama, superintendent action items?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to present the following items to the Board of Education this evening for their consideration. Item number one, to approve the payment of stipends as listed below, $28.86 per hour not to exceed five hours to the following teacher for professional development for the Elyria University. This stipend will be supported by Title II A funds. Item number two, to approve the payment of stipends as listed below, $14.31 per hour not to exceed 32 hours for the following attendant required for Murray Ridge training. This stipend will be supported by general funds. Item number three, overnight athletic field trip, to approve the overnight athletic field trips for the Elyria High School basketball and wrestling teams as detailed in enclosure K3, and you could see those items listed below on the agenda as well. Item number four, to approve the district's gifted identification plan as required by the Ohio Department of Education as specified in Section 3324.04 of the Ohio Revised Code as detailed in enclosure K4. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my items under this section of the agenda.
Great, thank you. Dr. Jama, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent action items? Move to approve. The motion by board member Bax, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by board member Karstoffen. Any discussion items? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Dr. Jama, any superintendent other today?
No other items except for items under personnel action as recommended by the superintendent, Mr. President.
Okay.
To approve, item number one, to approve the retirement of certified staff members as detailed below, Susan Cavacichi, grade one teacher at Ely, Pam Christian, language arts teacher at the Elyria High School, and Kathy Peterson, kindergarten teacher at the EECV. I would like to wish these individuals the best of luck as they start a new chapter in their lives with retirement. This also brings our number up, just so the board knows, up to eight certified staff members who have announced their retirement at the end or conclusion of this school year. Item number two, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff as detailed below, and this again is for substitute teachers, home tutors, things of that nature. Item number three, to approve the athletic supplemental contracts of the following certified staff, employees and non-employees as listed below. Item number four, to approve the unpaid leave of absence of the following classified staff member as detailed below. Item number five, to approve the resignation of the following classified staff member as detailed below. Item number six, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff members as detailed below, and again, you could see that goes from substitute to a utility, and then other items as far as substitute professionals, lunch, and as well as our building ops. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations under personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent for your consideration this evening.
Great, thank you, Dr. Jama. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel action items as recommended by the superintendent?
I'll make that motion.
The motion by board member Gebhardt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Karstoffen. Any discussion items? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Dr. Jama, any other personnel items? Does Mrs. Gebhardt have to be hired here today? Do we have any other personnel action items today?
No, do not, Mr. President. But we do have Mr. Taylor who would like to announce any.
Oh, okay, Mr. Taylor, always so welcome to see you.
My pleasure to be here.
Absolutely.
Wednesday night is important.
Yeah, there's nowhere else you'd rather be, right?
Nowhere else, this is the place.
Okay.
Welcome Devon Boone, who will be joining the building ops department located right here at-
Great. Welcome aboard Devon.
Thank you.
That's it? Great, maybe next time he can stay a little longer. All right, with that, Dr. Jama, how about a superintendent report?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, thank you. Just a couple of things I'd like to say. First of all, I'd like to thank Amy and everybody who was involved in the groundbreaking ceremony that took place at the new multi-sports complex stadium last week, it was a great, great evening, what a wonderful, exciting time to be a pioneer, and know that we're going into a new, a new multi-sports complex here within the next year. And I also know that we have another groundbreaking coming up the Monday after Thanksgiving that will take place at the new Northwood Campus or the Pioneer Field, and that will take place at noon, noon at the Pioneer Campus the Monday after Thanksgiving, and as I had said that night, it's really exciting that the first one kicked off so well and now we have five more to go, and what an exciting time for this school district. I would like to thank Big Lots, going to that grand opening was very special, and I spent a lot of time in Big Lots, it's a store that I like to go to and just kinda decompress at the end of the day, and I'll tell you, the new building is absolutely amazing that, the work that they put into it, so I'm gonna visit it even more frequently than I visited the past one, getting all those specials. They think I'm kidding, I do, I spend a lot of time at Big Lots.
Is that you I see sleeping in there?
No, I won't. What's nice there, they have real nice furniture in the middle where I could sit, take a newspaper and read it, I mean, things go really well, but all joking aside, thank you Big Lots for such a generous donation. It's my privilege now to bring up Brian Kokai, who would like to share some wonderful information with the board, and I'm not sure if this is the first time that you'll hear something as exciting as this, because I know sports teams can't be world-ranked, and I'm not sure about our instrumental and things of that nature, but I think, Brian, you have something to share with us tonight.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Dr. Jama, is this on?
Yes.
President Elick, members of the board, our middle school teams are competing in robotics for the first time this year, and on this past Friday, they went to their first tournament in Braxhill and knocked it out of the park, they did amazing. Our one team finished first in skills, which is just a demonstration of technique and how you're able to play the game, they were, which puts them ranked first in the state of Ohio for middle school. It ranks them 114 worldwide in middle school, which doesn't sound maybe that high until you consider there's over 5,000 middle school teams.
Wow, that's great.
So that puts them in the top 2%. Their score when compared to high school students puts them at 437, so that puts them in the top 10% of high school students when added into, worldwide.
Wow, that's great.
So, and they finished second overall, they did amazing in their first tournament. In addition to that, we sent three teams there, and one of our other teams finished second in skills, which you can imagine that makes them second in skills in Ohio, 115th worldwide, and then, of course, in the top 10%, one combined with high school as well. And then, last but not least, our third team did very well as well, they scored fifth in skills, which is still very well good for their first time out there. They're competing against programs that have been established for years, and they just had an excellent time. And of note is that our number one ranked team is an all-girls team.
Wow, that's great.
An anomaly at robotics.
Great.
Just wanted to share that.
That's outstanding, super, great, thanks for sharing that.
Brian, I always want to repeat that again so Lisa makes sure she heard that, we are world-ranked, correct? World-ranked.
I was more interested in the all-girls.
Wow, that's outstanding.
Thank you for your leadership, Brian.
Absolutely.
Great, thanks for sharing that, Brian.
These are the type of things that happen because of what you just said, Jim, the leadership that takes place in our administrative team, in our classrooms, and these kids are excited and wanting to do these exciting things, and it's great that we can offer it to our students.
Great, great, thanks for sharing, Dr. Jama.
Absolutely.
Thanks for even sharing the part about Big Lots too, that's good to know, that's where you-
I liked that too, I thought it was a good time, Tom, it was cool.
Okay, back to business here, moving along on the agenda, Board of Education, I need a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following board policies. As you can see, interrogation searches, first aid, criminal record check, and the college credit plus. Do I have a motion to approve?
I will- Excuse me, Mr. Elick, would you like to combine the next one also? Yes.
Sure, sounds good to me. All right, hold that thought, and then also to waive the second reading and adopt the following policy as required by the Ohio Department of Education, and that is for the first reading and adoption of the IGBB program for students who are gifted. So could I get a motion to approve both, please?
Move to approve both.
Great, thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion items?
No.
With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. And with no further business before this board, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by board member Karstoffen?
Second.
Second by board member Bax. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Good job everyone.